This time I'd like to call the Nash Board of Education to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. This time I will turn the meeting over to Chairman Davis. And likewise, I'd like to call the recess meeting of Nash County Board of Commissioners to be ordered at this time. We've turned the presentation over to Dr. Ellis.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
So, it's our pleasure tonight to be able to present some of the progress our schools have been making for probably the beginning of this year. The good thing is we are back in schools and it's great to see kids in the halls. So, we're all making progress on that end. That is great to see kids in school. Tonight, we're going to present our current conditions and some steps moving forward. Once again, I just want to thank you for your continued support. This partnership is very important to us because with us together, it makes a better Nash County student. So, I want to thank you again for your support. At this time, I will go over the agenda. So, we'll go over the current conditions, talk about capital projects, capital projects with ESRA funding, discuss Red Oak Elementary, facility capacity at this time, looking ahead, Northern Nash Fieldhouse, a refresh plan for technology, recruitment bonus, vaccination clinics, and teacher supplements. And at the end, if there are any questions, we will hold them to the end. So, at this time, Mr. Davis, would you come?
Okay, good evening. Start my slideshow here. Start with them, we'll go over capital projects. This is projects commissioners give us, our local capital outlay money given to us each year. Some of the projects that we've either completed or currently in progress, I'll try to explain them as we go through them. Winston Avenue, we have already replaced the carpet in the multipurpose room with what we're using now is a seamless polyurethane floor with school colors, a little more attractive, a little easier to clean. We've also completed Willoughby with the same type flooring system. Nashville Elementary School replaced the bleachers in the gym. They were completed about a week ago. And Nashville Elementary gym windows were put in in July. Northern Nash High School, we have just actually started replacing the lights in classrooms, the LED fixtures and suspended ceilings. We have about 15 classrooms we're working on between now and the end of January. Nash Central High School, we have replaced the roofs on both gymnasiums, the fieldhouse, and the media center. Those are complete as well. Southern Nash High School, we've also replaced the gym roof. It was completed in August. And Fairview Elementary was Phase Two of the shingle roof, the second build of that campus. It's also complete. Spring Hope Elementary, we've replaced the gym roof with a single mem- from a single membrane to a metal roof matching the existing building. Johnson Elementary School, the joint parking lot between Fairview and Johnson has been overlaid and restripped. We've purchased two maintenance vehicles and two trim mowers for the grounds department. This next list is the ESRA's funding, capital projects. As you'll see, as we continue, we did mostly heating and air in windows. These projects, Northern Nash Gymnasium is currently probably within four to six weeks of being completed. Northern Nash Chiller replacement in the 600 building, contract is written, chiller's been ordered. Cooper's Elementary Dining Room, we're waiting on that equipment to arrive. We'll install that in-house. Hubbard Elementary Cafeteria has been replaced. And this week, we have finished Hubbard Elementary, the 200 and 300 wings. We did the 200 and 300 in-house with the new VRF system. Hubbard Elementary, we've also updated the control system in the 100 wing as well as the 2 and 300 with the new iTouch with the VRF system. Nash Central Middle School, we've ordered both chillers. One of those was installed last week. The second should be in within two to three weeks. Southern Nash Middle School Gymnasium, HVAC's been totally renovated there. Southern Nash Middle 600 wing has been updated to a VRF system. It was completed about two weeks ago. Southern Nash Middle 200 wing equipment has been ordered. That will be changed to a VRF system, should start sometime around Christmas. Tall River Academy, which is on the Rocky Mount Middle Campus, the old science building, we closed the old Braswell Campus on Pearl Street and moved those kids there. We have installed the VRF system, what I call Phase One downstairs. We'll complete the upstairs this coming summer. And Parker Middle Gym HVAC replacement, it was finished this week other than some fine tuning and startup. Parker Middle Chiller has been ordered. It should be in sometime around middle of December. Nashville Elementary Boiler and Chiller replacement, contracts have been written. Equipment has not been ordered yet. Red Oak Elementary Gym, which is a portion of the building at the new elementary that we're renovating in-house, equipment has been ordered. Rocky Mount Middle Chiller, one of those has been ordered, waiting for it to arrive. Edwards Middle, the 5, 7, 8, 9, and administrative building, office wing, is the new VRF system. Open bids today on that. We'll be writing the contract within the next week. And Bailey Elementary, contract has been written and they will be ordered probably within the next two weeks. Window replacement, Hubbard Elementary and Willoughby both have been ordered. They should start sometime in month of May. The lead time on windows right now are quite a ways out. Edwards Middle was opened this week. Bids on Tuesday, we're in the process of writing contracts. Spring Hope Elementary and Cooper's Elementary Pre-K Building, open those bids on Tuesday as well and we'll start writing contracts. We've also purchased 14 activity buses with the ESRA's funding and was told today they should be here middle of December. Now, moving on to Red Oak Elementary, the new construction. This picture was shot this Monday morning. It has actually changed quite a bit. You can see the crews out. This is the new staff parking lot. They were putting curb and gutter, setting it in. A lot of that has been stoned now in preparation for the steel package. This here is the building as it's coming close to the gymnasium, some of the footings have been poured. This is another shot of that. If you'll see the two double doors, that's where the new building will tie into the gymnasium so we do not have to take kids outside to enter the new building. The blockwork you see to the right of that are where windows, that whole area, once you come in will be storage, book storage and things of that nature. They will be bricked in. You can see where we got a lot of the concrete in place. The wing going back out is the second, third grade wing. That's going back toward the Red Oak Middle School football field. This wing here is the fourth and fifth. That's actually headed toward the gymnasium, the picture I just showed you. This was actually been poured since Monday. Took these pictures. This is the front section of the building, the admin area, media center, and the dining room on the fore end. A good chunk of that has also been concreted since this picture was taken. This is the interior of the gym. As you can see, my staff has already removed bleachers. The bleachers have been bid, they have been awarded. We've written the contract and in the process of getting them ordered. You can also see that all of the old boiler pipes, steam pipes from two systems have been cut out of the ceilings, exposing the beautiful wood structures. And you can see the new LED lighting my staff put in, which was part of ours. So, that is complete as well. Now, we'll move on to facility capacity. I've kind of broken these down. We got current ADM on the left and our capacity, which is our school capacity. And I will tell you, the capacity numbers, if you're looking at the elementaries when I get to them, these capacity numbers do not reflect the current ADMs of the classrooms. So, if you look at the current ADM and look at some of the grades, say Bailey with a 535 ADM currently with a 664 capacity, that 664 really isn't 664 anymore because of the K3 class size reduction. We can't put as many kids in this building as we once could, once the capacity was laid out with architects. But as you can see, we've got Bailey, Middlesex, Spring Hope, Cooper's. This is kind of the southern schools. You can look at where we are and look at the capacities. And these numbers are as they exist today, some of these numbers were much higher before COVID. We're hoping some of these kids will come back. I know Nashville, if you'll look at it, we had a capacity of 682. Right now, we're 633, where we were over capacity before COVID. Of course, this is the northern tier schools. You look at the current ADM. If you look at the bottom, what I've done is added the Cedar Grove, Swift Creek, Red Oak numbers, which gives us 542. The current core capacity of that campus is 821. When we started the design process, the numbers were about 703 to 706 combination between the three campuses. So, you can kind of see where our numbers have fallen a little since COVID has come This is what I called a big three down through the middle of Rocky Mount, Winston Avenue, Inglewood, Benvenue, and Willoughby. Of course, you can see the numbers there. The last three, or the three in Edgecombe County, Johnson, Fairview, and Baskerville, and their correlated numbers. Southern Nash Middle School, 789, 850, we were really close to capacity on that campus prior to COVID. Nash Central Middle maybe has lost a few. And Red Oak Middle is, doesn't have a lot of room for growth as well. You look at Edwards, 425 and 827, Rocky Mount Middle, and Parker Middle. Then we have our four high schools, their current ADMs relatively close with some room for growth in most of them, Southern being having the least amount of empty seats. And of course, here's our three alternative schools, Early College City, Tall River. Looking ahead. Before I get into this, I presented the CIP back in March to both boards. Going through the ESRA's projects, I've kind of, we've kind of gone through the CIP with a lot of our mechanical projects, some of the window projects is not identical. Three of the major renovations that went to CIP, we have not done anything with, of course financially. Nashville Elementary School is one that has a new build, but the 300 wing and cafeteria, desperate need of upgrade. That 300 building really, I think out of recall, is maybe two to three years newer than Red Oak Elementary. So, they're both kind of sitting in the same age category. Spring Hope Elementary, same thing. We built a new building, 200 wing and cafeteria, desperate need of replacement. And then we go down to Middlesex, same thing. We've got a new campus, 300 wing, and the media centers in the oldest building there, which needs replacement. And Southern Nash Middle, this is kind of an outlier, but it's something that as growth, future growth continues down at the southern end of the county, a possibility would be to repurpose Southern Nash Middle School. Possibly as enrollment growth takes place, turning it into an elementary school and constructing a new Southern Nash Middle School. Finally, the Northern Nash Fieldhouse. We've been working on the design and renderings for this now for several months. Finally got something we feel like we're proud to present. If you'll look here, this is where the fieldhouse will sit. If you go to northern where the existing scoreboard is, this is where the fieldhouse will sit. We've kind of broken this into color codes. We'd like to separate the home and visitor teams like at the other three high schools. So, this would where we would bring the home people in. Visitors would come in here and rotate around here. This possibility of a future parking lot for coaches, buses, and of course, we've got exterior fencing all the way around. This design concept was taken from Nash Central High School and Southern Nash, and we had all of the floor plan enough because if you've noticed, the banks are inverted. Whereas Nash Central High School and Southern Nash High School, you're looking down on the field from the two-story level. So, when you're looking at the football field, you're looking at a two-story structure. Where Northern Nash High School, you're looking at the two-story from the practice field, from the backside. The floor plans are relatively the same with the exception of moving offices around and a set of interior steps, which I'll explain in a minute. You'll see those, they come from the bottom floor up to the top floor, what I call the field level. We've got the same restrooms as we do, got a team room, concession, visitor concession, same as we have at Nash Central High and Southern Nash High. This is what we call the lower level, which is coming out of the practice football field. We have the same things. We've got our locker rooms, coaches' offices, we've got storage, the training room, and of course, here's the stairs that carry you back up to the field level. This is what the front entrance of the field will look like. The set of stairs I just showed you are those two doors. Players will come up those stairs and come out on the field. If you'll notice, that's the same home restrooms, visitors' restrooms on the right side. We've got this gated off to keep visitors and home fans away from crossing each other. This is the two-story section that you'll see from the practice fields. What I was telling you was inverted. The other two high schools, this is what you're seeing on field level view. This is what you'll see at this facility from the practice field. Talking with Ms. Miller, we were looking at ticket booths originally. And while we were looking at numbers, we realized that you don't buy a ticket anymore at a football field. You go on an app, you purchase it, and you redeem it with your phone. So, instead of having a brick mortar building, we kind of tied this concept in with, you saw the front of the fieldhouse, kind of the same look. We're doing it with the home and a visitor's entrance. And that's the end of my presentation.
Can we ask questions? Yes. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis? Ms. Bell, Bill?
I was noticing the attendance at the different schools. What is the projection into the future? It didn't seem, couple of them were almost at capacity, but some of them are way down. So, have you looked at the projection of the number of students you might have in My question was, I was looking at when you were going through the attendance there. Is any, most of those schools were not really close to capacity. Now, what is the projection into the next decade as to the attendance, enrollment rather in national public schools?
Well, just looking, and I don't do the demographic piece, but just looking at the trends and where the building is, we think one of our largest concerns right now would be the southern end of the county. That's where a lot of the building is taking place. If you notice a lot of our numbers, that's where we're probably closer, more closer to capacity, down to 58 corridor. We do have a couple of schools in the center of town, Inglewood being one. Winston is probably within 100 capacity. You know, at some point, as enrollment grows, there will have to be some decisions made as how we move kids to the empty seats.
Mr. Davis, you went through a whole lot very quickly, as you know. But the drop back, in the beginning, you talked about the capital improvement projects that you were able to do with the funding that came from the county. Is that first group before you get to your federal money, all done with the county funding that we give you on maintenance of effort to maintain the schools?
On the, are you saying on the capital side?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all of those projects, I think from going through that list, most of those, if not all of those are completed.
Right.
If that's what you're asking.
Well, more so, it seems like you've done a whole lot with the amount of money that I know the commissioners were, gave you for that type capital project. And so, it's a little surprising how much you were able to get done. Did you have other federal money weaved into that? Or is that first group all what you done with the funds we gave?
Yes, sir. The first group I gave you, if, let's see if we can, the first group I gave you was total capital, the 1.396.
Yes, sir.
That is total capital, local capital funding that has no ESRA funding involved.
Right. So, it appears like, apparently, you must do quite a bit more with your maintenance staff than other school systems do because you sure got a lot done with that amount of money and of course, knowing what things cost. Is that what's happening?
We incorporate quite a bit of work with our in-house staff. I mean, I've got an excellent staff. I'm proud of the people that do work for me. I got professionals. I say all the time, I think I'm more the spokesperson. I get the pat on the back more than I should, but I do have a great staff and I'm proud of what they do.
Well, I just look at the list and I know something different had to happen for you to accomplish this with 1.9 million. So, if you get a chance, tell your staff how much the commissioners appreciate the effort that they do to get as much done as they do with the dollar amounts that we give them. Because it's very obvious that you stretch it a long ways.
Appreciate that, sure will.
Particularly in the day's times. Could you, I know I met with y'all one night this week, looking at a few details on the fieldhouse, and you explained a little bit about this, but could you explain what those funds are that comes behind that? I know they're federal funds, but, and I noticed it looked like you used the majority of them for heating and air, but is that what our fund that we call American Recovery Program Funds, is that your American Recovery Program Funds?
Yes, sir. My part of it is, I didn't get all that the district got, but my portion from the district is about 12.3 million. And as of this afternoon, I think allocated or encumbered, or soon to be encumbered projects totals about 9.3 million. So, I'm getting close to having about 3 million left to spend before I'll have my ESRA funding taken care of. Now, some of these projects will be a year in the making, windows being the biggest lead time. I've got some not starting to march, which it will take four or five months to get them totally installed because we're doing entire campuses, but the money will be tied up and encumbered.
I don't think I'll board, I know I didn't, realize how much money you had and what you were doing with it, but what is your next five-year or 10-year plan going to look like? It's going to look better than it's ever looked, isn't it?
Well, as you know, if we could stop the age of, the aging of buildings and equipment, it would be wonderful, but I will tell you, hopefully, when we punch out this other side, the facilities in the next five years will be in a lot better shape mechanically. We still have challenges with roofs. You know, I mentioned, I think in the CIP, we've got several roofs now. I think the Winston Avenue could push 400,000. So, those are the challenges right now after we punch through mechanical that we really want to start looking at. But yes, sir, to answer your question, we are, we are in pretty good shape other than the renovation and the expansion of our facilities.
So, the three billion you haven't encumbered yet, you've got plenty of places to spend that.
Yes, sir. We'll run out of money before we run out of projects.
Well, I thought that would be the answer to that, but still, it's really amazing how much you're getting done off of that five-year plan though, that none of us expected funding would be available for. So, I guess to summarize what my thought is, there's a lot of bad things about COVID, but if you look hard enough, you can find some positive out of it as well. Bad comparison, but I do see some positive things that have come about for it. But do you have many restrictions? We are so restricted on our funding at the county level. Do you have a lot of restrictions on that money that you got? I know you put most of it in heating and cooling, which is one thing we can do as well, but how restricted is that funding?
Well, before we ever started encumbering, Ms. Wallace, who is very, very knowledgeable in the federal guidelines, we went to her and we wanted to make sure that, we won't tightrope in anything from a standpoint of an audit. So, we tried to stay with windows, the ventilation side, so that we, hopefully, will not have any issues as far as getting or coming close to a line.
Are roofs can be done with that as well or not?
I have heard of some districts pushing that envelope. I don't think that's one I want to push.
Understood, okay. Other commissioners got something to say? I got a few more questions, but I'll be quiet for a few minutes if your people have questions.
Any school board members got questions for Mr. Davis? I think we all know what kind of job our maintenance department does, and it's amazing. In fact, some of our county commissioners might need to talk with Mr. Davis as this Red Oak Elementary project goes on and some of these HVAC units go in other schools, just to see them in action. What they do in the summertime when other maintenance staff are not doing it. I know that VFR that Shannon keeps talking about, I saw them working on that at Southern Nash Middle. It's amazing the job they do.
Other commissioners got questions?
One thing, Shannon, which you certainly touched on, is we asked to be briefed on, which you have done in the preliminary stage, is we are concerned about our capital improvement program that we do five years and 10 years out. And the request was to start letting us know what the building needs were beyond Red Oak Elementary School. What that would be and what you, where you think it would be and what the cost may be. But I'm really surprised at the number of empty seats that you've got, that you seem to be saying a lot of it is caused by COVID. And where are those children at? And that's not fair to ask you. I asked Dr. Ellis that, I guess.
Most of those kids that we can never track, either homeschool, private school, or development. Now, we lost about, correct, about 850 last year. We recovered about 300 some. So, we're hoping that once we get back to normalcy, we can bring most of those kids back. But we also have, it's not up there, but the ADA program, which is a national visual But we also have, it's not up there, but the NEDA program, which is a national visual school that we have now, that's about 370?
345.
345 kids come off that big and they're not going to build. So we have added another school based on what the state's...
Right. Criteria was last year based on COVID, so. Do you, I probably shouldn't ask this question, but everybody in the room knows me, I try to ask the hard questions. But I noticed you're always battling about masks. Is when we get to the point where we don't have to wear masks in schools, will we get any more children back, you think? Or I guess you just don't know that?
So, I really don't know. I think the whole issue with masks right now for us is an issue about quarantining students. So.
I'm not questioning any decision y'all made. I'm just, I'm just looking at these kids about it.
I don't know when kids leave, when we have an exit interview for kids, they say that they left because of masks. I, I don't have any data on that.
Right, okay. So Shannon, to answer our board's question about capital needs, it, it seems like we got a little bit of breathing room with seats. But you're, and of course, we know how many lots we approve and how many permits we are issuing every month now. And I agree with you that just from what we've seen and what we've approved, the southern part of the county, it would be probably where the focus would be. So, so you're thinking the middle school there, which we've been knowing this, I think, for five years, is probably the next big project that the school system may have?
That is definitely a, a project that we'd love to look into, as well as those other three renovation projects with the Nashville Spring Hope and, and Middlesex as well. Just purely if nothing other than the age of the building and at some point having a major expenditure and, and then deciding to, to, to move forward.
Well, I think we learned at Red Oak that it's very important to have a plan of what your next need is, and as further along you've got that, when that special opportunity pops up like it did with the lottery funding that, that the county was able to get. If you've got a project in mind, you're much more apt to get the funding because it's always way less than what the whole state needs. So I would just think anything y'all could be doing to establish a long-term capital need list, and, and let's decide together how far we want to push it. So we'll have a project ready when funds are ready because there's a lot of money coming out now. And we'd just like to be ready, just like we are in our industrial recruitment program as well, building, shell buildings, the things of that nature. I do know, in spending some time in Kansas some years ago when my brother lived there, we'd go by a school that was sitting there, and I'd ask why it's sitting there like that. And it was built ahead of time for a projected need, so it would be ready when you need that. I know we're not talking about that because all my boys are looking at me like I'm nuts now, but we're not looking at that, but certainly not anything wrong with having something ready on paper. So if there's, there's some quick funds that may be available or a program that pops out, we've got something on the shelf further ahead than most counties have, so we can put it and get stuff done. That's just my thought. Mr. Adler?
Yeah, I just got one question. If you look at the three building schools, Edward, Black Mountain Park, their capacity is 2134, and you've got right at 1,100 kids in those three schools. Do you have any plans to do anything with one of those schools to shut it down? Or what, what are your plans there?
We, we do have some, some plans that, that we are working on as far as doing something with, with two of those campuses.
Our manager was just pointing out to me, and Dr. Ellis, I'm sure you, you aware of this, what came out in the budget today, the large number for school construction with no lottery fund holdback. So that would be a good example of what we should be ready for. Thank you, sir. Other commissioners got comments or questions?
As, as we look into our one-to-one refresh plan, we are truly thankful to have the, receive the ESER funding. So with the ESER funding, we were able to accomplish, let me go to, yeah, with the ESER funding, we were able to accomplish one of our biggest goals. And that goal is to have enough adequate devices for our students and our staff. So with our ESER funding, we have also developed a refresh plan, and that refresh plan is of the following. If you see here, we have our pre-K through first grade, and we're, we're planning to refresh those devices every four years. And the reason why we're planning to do that is because those particular devices are grade-specific. And if you look at our next point is, we're planning on replacing our devices for our second, fifth, and the ninth grade. The reason why we're doing that, we're replacing their devices every four years. And we'll also have included our early college and our city high. Now, when these students receive these new devices, they would keep these devices for four years. And the reason why we mapped it like this is because of the warranty on the devices. So the warranty on the devices lasts for four years. We also included our staff as well with the refresh plan. And if you look at our staff numbers, we have about roughly maybe 2,000 staff members. And so with that being said, we are replacing about 450 devices annually. And to sustain this whole project, it's going to cost us about 1.5 million dollars yearly. So that's a, a real big point. And that is all I have to say. Are there any questions about the refresh plan? That's great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As a means to compete with our surrounding districts, as well as recruit quality staff members, Dr. Ellis and our board allowed us to allot funds for recruitment bonus this school year, and it is as follows. So at the beginning of the school year, we had several hard-to-fill positions. They were elementary EC, middle schools, and EC is exceptional children, math and science areas, high school, exceptional childrens, math and science areas, instructional assistance in the EC and the regular setting, bus drivers, and NEDA, which is our virtual academy. We also had the electus in the elementary area, which were our art, music, media, and PE. And we had numerous vacancies at the following schools, DS Johnson and Parker Middle. Again, Dr. Ellis and the board allowed us to appropriate $400,000 to set aside just to recruit quality staff in the certified and the classified areas. We had some requirements in place that they had to comply with in order to receive the funding. We only required a one-year commitment. They received a supplement for the certified staff only, and they could also opt in to receive the first five months of their supplement pay in September if they were hired by August 29th, 2021. And they also would receive the bonuses if they were hired from July 5th until December 21st, 2021. However, it would be prorated based on the start date. The bonus payments were paid in three, three options, three, three tiers. They got a third paid at the end of September 2021, a third will be paid in January, and the remainder will be paid in May of 2022. And they had to be in good standing with the district in order to receive the full funding. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Did you, excuse me, did you say what the amount of the bonus would be?
It is tiered based on the position that they go in, but I do have the amounts. It's not listed here.
Is it, is there an average or?
3,000 for teachers, 1,000 for TAs and classified staff.
Do you have a retention bonus?
Yes, sir. We are taking it to the board for approval in December, and if it is approved, it will be paid out in December.
So for, I'm talking about for teachers that you currently have, are you giving any of those a bonus for staying with the system?
Yes, sir. It will be taken to the board for approval next month.
So will that be the same as recruitment?
No, sir. We don't have...
What would be the difference?
It will be, depending on what they approve, the retention bonus would be anywhere from 500 to 750 dollars.
So it would be less than for your current teachers for what you're trying to recruit in?
Yes, sir.
Why would you, why would you have a difference in that?
Well...
How many openings do you have right now in your system?
We have 122 openings right now.
So what you're trying to do is retain what you've got, which makes it easier because you've got less that you're trying to recruit in. It just seems to me that you would want to be somewhat comparable with those teachers that you've currently got. Just my thinking.
Point taken.
I, I know this, the budget that's just come out, I was talking to the superintendent beforehand, and I understand there's some supplement for, for local school systems and local teachers from the state, which is a new thing. Supplements historically have been a local funding thing, and I know it's tiered based on the counties, and if the superintendent could share what our district's going to get.
So based on yesterday's budget, it seems like the, based on your tax rate and poverty levels, we would receive about 1,100 dollars per teacher from the state. That would be reoccurring, so that would be every year up till whenever they stop funding it. But there are some districts that would get 4,800. We would only get about 1,100. So that would increase the supplement as to what we're having now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Talk briefly about vaccination clinics. So we have been fortunate enough to be able to work with UNC hospitals to put in place six vaccination clinics for the first dose, and that would be a Pfizer vaccine clinic. Nash County Public Schools are hosting the site. UNC Hospital is actually carrying out the vaccination. The first one would be December 14th, that's at Southern Nash High School, two to six. December 15th would be at Rocky Mount High School, two to six. And then on December 16th, the last one for the first dose clinic would be at Nash Central High School from two to six p.m. Our second dose Pfizer vaccine clinic would be on January 5th to the six, that would be at Southern Nash High School. On January the sixth, two to six is Rocky Mount. And then our last one for the second dose clinic would be January 7th at Nash Central High School from two to six p.m. Are there any questions for me?
Northern Nash, how you handling that?
Could you say that again, sir?
Northern Nash, he asked about how are we handling that?
We're not having one at Northern Nash. We're just using those three, the three high schools that are listed here, Southern, Rocky Mount, and Nash Central. And, and for those, students from all over the district can come to those, to those clinics. And as you see, we have them listed in three consecutive days. So it doesn't matter where a student lives in the district, they can attend either one of those clinics.
Is there a reason you didn't choose Southern Nash? I mean, Northern Nash, I'm sorry.
When we first, when we did the clinics in the summer, and Ms., Nurse Terrell, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the three clinics that are here, the three schools that are here are the ones that we used this summer. Rocky Mount, Nash Central, and I believe, but did we do one at Southern? Nurse Terrell?
We did Northern in the summer.
Was it Northern in the summer?
Yeah, they were so close geographically that we wanted to give them, Shannon, we got to be the most, like, in the summer. So, geographically, we were close together.
But you did do one at Nash. You did do one at Nash. I mean, Northern.
Northern Nash. National.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
This man.
Our students asked to sign up or make appointments? Or is it open during those hours to anyone?
There, there's a system that's in place through UNC Healthcare that correct Nurse Terrell. And, and what we're doing as, as a school district, we're, we're really hosting the sites, but UNC Healthcare is managing the actual vaccination clinic. Any other questions?
So I was going to speak to the, the bonus concern about retention of teachers, and I'm just going to tell you my philosophy. So there's a lot of money floating around through ESER funding right now, that some districts are using that money for bonuses, things of that nature. But in my opinion, that's only going to last for about a year. And the problem I have with that is if we have a big enough supplement, we'll outpace a 500 dollar retention bonus. Because what a lot of districts are doing is they're, they're doing 2,000, 3,000 dollar bonuses over two years. Well, after that two-year period over, it goes to the local. And I'm just being honest, there's no way we could pay 1,000 dollar bonuses for teachers like that every year. So we're allowing that supplement to be that portion of money that's higher than a 500 or 1,000 dollar bonus. So that, that's, that's my reasoning, I'll just put it that way. Because when you retain teachers, a lot of it has to do with what I'm about to speak about. Because when we talked about, probably our last meeting, we, we spoke about the supplement and how we want to be competitive to some of the districts surrounding us. And these are averages. Wake County and Johnson have a little different adjustment they do with supplements. It's based on years of experience, and it's like a floating percentage based on how many years you've been in the district. So you can see right now, our supplement is at 4,858. And when we spoke last time, we spoke about a 1% increase, which would cost 649... cost six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, and that would bump us up to about eleven percent, which is very competitive in this surrounding area. So that would jump to almost five thousand dollar supplement. Johnston County has raised theirs since we spoke, because they're at about, they're at a floating ten and a thirteen right now. And you can tell Wake what they've done, they've gone up to, I think that says twenty-three. But I do think if we could stick with some signing bonuses and bump up this supplement, we're gonna be able to retain these teachers that have been leaving. So are there any questions for the group that you have?
Dr. Ellis, when you talked about the eleven thousand dollars, excuse me, eleven hundred dollars per teacher, what percent is that equal average for supplement?
Of our supplement?
Yes, sir. If I understood you, uh, the presentation said the average supplement that's in the state budget is about eleven hundred dollars per teacher for this county, that they would keep going, that would be ongoing, a, and not a one, in other words, they would cover that ongoing.
Right.
But what, what percent would that equal on the average?
To me, it's based on, you know, and the formula that they shared the other day was tax base, tax rate, it was a whole formula that came up.
Sure.
To come up with eleven hundred. I don't, I don't know why it did that way, but, um, and then we're being told it's just gonna be a one-time check every year for teachers that just come.
But, but it's considered a supplement?
It's considered a supplement.
But if we're at ten now, what would that average raise be to?
Well, I'm thinking it would be probably about a percentage and a half maybe, because when we calculated ours, it was about a million for about one percent, that'd be about one point five. So I'm thinking we'd be up to about another percentage point in supplement.
Well, if you're six forty-nine at one percent, it, it would be almost two percent, would it not?
That's like a one, I, I'm thinking one point five, yeah.
Okay.
Um, you finished? I'm sorry. Um, God. The, um, I just have a question about if currently ten percent, and I suppose that's ten percent to eleven and a half percent is forty-eight hundred and fifty-eight, and you add a one percent to a ten percent supplement, that would seem to be four hundred and eighty-five dollar additional amount, but you're only showing another forty-eight dollars average. What, how, how does that come about?
Ms. Jared, I'll have to ask you, because I don't have a calculator, how that was done.
Seems like it would be another about five hundred dollars rather than.
This is the average, it's average, the average percentage is what it's at. Take one percent of what it was. Yes, this is just the local.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not talking about what the eleven hundred, I'm, I'm talking about if the county gave y'all another, uh, or with y'all's reserves, gave y'all another one percent. I, I, I'm just not sure how a ten percent supplement is forty-eight hundred and fifty-eight, now I know it's an average. And you add one percent to that, it just seems like it would be more than forty-eight dollars more average at eleven percent.
They're decimal off, they, they're just a decimal. Got decimal in the wrong, look.
I, I, I was just wondering.
And remember our supplement, we have a ten percent, eleven and twelve. Ms., Ms. Jared, if I speak incorrect, let me know. Ten percent is what they certify if you just have a bachelor's degree. Eleven percent would be a master's certificate. A specialist degree would give you twelve like a doctorate. So that's how you would have to base it.
Bachelor's is ten, master's is ten, and, um, it'd be just eleven.
There you go.
I think what we're saying is, what Mr. Lamb was saying, if you could take another look at that forty-nine oh six number, I, I, I think we, we've got a decimal in the wrong place there, is what it appears like. Right, yeah. It, it, it's, it's complicated, but, but I believe it would be more like.
That's exactly the difference.
Yeah.
It's point one percent, what was added rather than one.
One percent, yeah. I believe, I believe that, that chart over there, well, our number is, uh, in fact, they're all done the same way, so I think if you re-look at that number, it would be a different number.
Any more questions?
Well, I, I wanted to point out, the way you said that, uh, what we talked about last year, I think the discussion on our side was with Board of Commissioners, that we would be very willing to look at an additional percent in funding that, a, and would like the school system to consider that as well, so we could do a two percent increase in supplement like we have done in the past. That, that's the discussion that I think our board remembers, uh, at least I know a couple of us remember it that way, so, you know, you, you had to get through your budget and had to see what the budget looked like, we understood that, so maybe we're getting close to that point, and, and we can look at it that way. And i- if we find a way to do that with what the state's doing, I, I agree with you, that should be a big boost to retaining the teachers we have.
I think our concern was being able to sustain a one percent, that's all it, you know.
I, I have one more question. You said that the.
I think you have a cheat sheet over there from the state budget, Mr. Lamb, I think you're cheating.
I don't see it over there.
No, I, I, you said that the, the state supplement will be permanent, or is it for the biennium for two years?
As far as I know, it's gonna be per- permanent.
That'd be great.
Certainly should be.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, you got an update, any county commissioner update?
Well, I didn't, didn't really come with an update, but, uh, I will give a few comments, uh, based on what I've heard from our board and, and where I think we are. Uh, I, I do think we're, as a joint board meeting, and a joint board, the way we work together now has improved so much over the last couple of years, that, uh, it's one reason I think we can accomplish as much as we are doing, particularly on the capital side. Uh, we had made a commitment to one another back when we worked through this little elementary school, if we could go in it and work together on it, Franklin, that, uh, we thought we would come out better in the end, and, and I, I think we're all satisfied that we have come out better, I hope the school board feels that way, we're getting a great project out there at a, at a very valued price, of course, a lot of it was timing, no question about that, we got that project on the street and got it bid, uh, just in the nick of time. But, uh, the one, one thing, and I've said it, and, and I'll repeat it again, if we could just continue to work together on major capital projects, if you could stay in touch with us, let us know what your needs are gonna be as far out as you can, whether it's five years, six years, seven years, so we can be prepared to fund those when it comes, and keep it on our own revolving capital improvement plan. Because, uh, y- you know, what we know on our side is we are beginning to grow, and we're probably gonna continue to grow. What we don't want to happen in Nash County is what we saw happen in Wake County and in Johnston County, when they just, the growth overtook what the planning process had done, a, and they just got way behind on seats in schools. We want to stay ahead of that curve as much as we can, and certainly our growth is not gonna be as staggering as that was, but I do think it, it is coming, a, and, and will continue to happen for quite a number of years, so just i- if we would put planning for capital projects, uh, as near the top as we can, I, I believe it's gonna serve us both very well to stay ahead of that curve, and if we're gonna need a school in three to four years, we should be knowing it now, and we should be planning for it now. That's, that's the big thing that's on my mind, but I, I'm driven by capital projects, of course, so I'd certainly like any other commissioner to make any comment they got, any concern, uh, and I'm so glad we've kept the schools open, uh, and anything we can do to keep them open is gonna be, uh, in, in all of its best interest, because I don't think there's anybody in the room that feels like we accomplished as much last year as we should have been able to accomplish, uh, but, I mean, look what we dealt with, nobody was prepared for it, but really, in the end, the kids are the ones that suffered, uh, in the pandemic, a, and not, not been able to make that adjustment as quick as they could. I think y'all did a wonderful job of converting it to a, a virtual academy throughout the school systems, but it, it worked for some kids, and some kids it didn't seem to work, a, and that's just what I get from reading, and what I hear communities say, and of course, what I hear the board members that I, I know and see regular say. But, uh, overall, I, I don't know how you could've done any better than what you did, a, and we certainly appreciate, uh, the work that you have done, and so look forward to working with you moving forward. Please, other comments? Mr. Bellfield?
Uh, are we near the, are we near the end?
Sir?
Are we near the end? I, I have.
We are near the end, sir, and he's asking if we need to.
I have a comment and a question.
Yes, sir.
To the, uh, s- s- school board, and I was reading in the paper, and I saw it on TV, where your parents that sending their children to private schools, well, can apply for state funding, it's in the budget, and if the governor signs it, they will be able to do that. And I've been running through my mind, what impact is that gonna have on public education? Are we sliding in that direction? Um, public education, in my opinion, is the foundation of this country, and we don't need to let it go down to the point where, uh, a lot of kids will not end up with a good education. So have you all seen that bill? I haven't read it, I just, what I saw on TV, and I know the governor said he didn't like it, but there are a lot of good things in the budget, and he was not gonna veto it, he would go on and sign it. But I think there's something that all counties, public schools here in North Carolina need to take a look, you know, what can we do to stem the tide? Their parents, as, but I know they don't have the facilities, most of them, to take a real large crowd, but those that can, they may have to use a lottery to get in, but the point is, is that they can get tuition, and I'm not sure whether it's full tuition or a part of that tuition fee to go to private schools, and I was wondering if you're thinking about this, and how can, what can you as a board and the staff, superintendent staff do to make schools very attractive, that people wouldn't want to send their children to a private school, because they think the public schools is not educating their children?
The program you referred to is titled the Hope Scholarship, which has been in effect, I think it's been in its fifth year. The governor has given more money to the program, which allows kids to get a voucher to leave public school and take that voucher to the private school to pay for their tuition. And they raised the amount of money of income per family, it used to be for, uh, lower-income students, now it has been risen to a middle-class type of, uh, student, and I think that was the concern. Mr. Silver?
Uh, this, thank you for your remarks, I wanna make sure that I'm speaking clearly. This seems to be a very good matter, when you assume that you're becoming commissioners, that I'm missing, please let me know. It seems as though you are happy with the progress that we are making at Nash County Public Schools, and you intend to give us what we need in the future, as you have done before, and you're looking, did I misunderstand you say that?
Well, you're a little bit more liberal with words than I, than I was, I think, uh, when you.
Make sure that I understand correctly, that you will fund us in the future with good projects. I believe in Nash County, and I believe in this board, and I think that you know that we're doing good things with the money that y'all put in our pocket, so help me understand, but you will support us.
We will continue to support you, sir, and I think our working relationship is much better than it has been in a long time, a, and it, uh, delights us that it is, but certainly, we're gonna continue to support you. What we're asking for is as much of a projection as early as we can get it, so we can.
Yes, sir.
Funds available to fund the needs that we have for capital projects. Yes, sir.
I knew we were on the same page. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments this time? Mr. Outlaw?
Yeah, can I, can I ask Dr. Ellis, can you just clarify that supplement thing to be, is that, is that one percent school funding it, or is that joint funding, or exactly how is that paid?
I ain't even know, okay. Can you hear me?
I, I just wanted some clarification on that supplement. You said one percent, six forty-nine, is that totally funded by the school system, or are you looking for that to be a joint funding from the school system and the commissioners?
That would be joint, that would be county commissioner funding.
Okay, did, I know in the past we have jointly funded supplement increases, and I think, uh, there's been some receptiveness from our board to look at a two percent, which would be one and one.
And I guess I'd be looking at one, I don't think we could afford based on our local funding and down the road, what we're looking, or we might be facing down the road, I don't know how we could afford a one percent every year.
Well, me for one, I would be, knowing what I know now, I would be supportive of a two percent, a one to one, and, uh, maybe that's something you could look at, and we could revisit it.
Appreciate it, we will.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? One thing I'd like to add, Mr. Davis said, you know, our working relationship is a lot better, as a famous board member once said, if people looking on from the outside can definitely tell the county commissioners and the Board of Education, we're doing a better job of keeping the main thing, the main thing, as Ms. Edge used to say, and that is the students. That is the main thing we're all working towards, and I think we're doing a lot better job of doing that. It's time, Mr. Davidson?
Any other board member got comments? Okay. Well, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn the Nash County Board of Commissioners meeting. Have a motion by Commissioner Wilkins, they're second, second by Commissioner Bellfield. Any questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a like sign.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Nash Board of Education. Motion by Mr. Silver, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Washington, all in favor, say aye. All opposed likewise. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.